25 June 2020. And we have two items and two applicants tonight. The first one is a public hearing for the application of Hank Aguero and John Patterson for a variance at 2395 Lower Lake Road. First off, I guess I can introduce the members first of all, so we have on record, Board members Tom Scholes, Joe Cordero, Tim Hopkins, our alternate, Mary Kelleher, Sue Sanjo, myself Dan Ewell, Code Enforcement Officer Dean Zellamoyer, who might introduce him again, and Melissa Howell, the Corning Secretary. I'd like approval of the minutes of the last meeting we had. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'm moved to accept the minute.
Tom, you made the motion. Would you leave a second on that? Mary's a second. All those in favor? If we all had a chance to look at the prints for this, the blueprints for it, just briefly, I know we did. We've got a statement of hardship here, and I think everybody is probably familiar with it. In August 19, they bought property with the intention of run a baby, found out it was structurally unsound, and had it removed. And now they'd like to build a new house on it. Dean, is there anything that, you know, related to this?
No, basically, he's not going to need the subbacks. It's a non-conforming lot. That's why he's out there in area variance.
He'll be bringing them to the ground.
Yep.
And petitioner's not here, Mr. Aguero?
No.
No? Okay. Don't even get here, ask questions. Okay. You see here, questions to be proven regarding for this area variance. I think you probably all read them. And if I need to go through them, whether there's an undesirable change will be produced in a neighborhood, or detriment to nearby properties will be created by the granting of this area variance. And they're stating the previous homes of light on the neighborhood. They've removed trees. And they've, as a courtesy to their neighbors, they've removed trees and redesigned the roof line to be less obtrusive. The neighbors have done very poorly.
Have you heard from the neighbors?
I wanted to ask, is there any written lines as far as neighbors?
No. There are no more complaints.
No, nobody. Well, anybody's here for the salt, I guess.
Dan, I'm familiar with people do north of the property, do north of that property. They're in Baltimore, they are visiting my neighbors today. And they're in favor of the project.
They are in favor of the project.
Just to give anybody a sign that's been there for some years.
From what I've read, I haven't seen anything to the contrary.
Yeah.
No. And I was down there today. In surprise, surprise, this is a non-conforming lot. What is a don't like, Chris? So they don't see any other path to build without this area variance. And whether this was a substantial area variance, they don't believe overly is so. Plans to build almost exactly on the previously existing home's footprint. Dean, as far as you know, this is going to be exactly where the old house was?
He says so, but he's got the veterans.
It says on the statement, does anybody have a question about that experience?
Yeah, because I never saw the original. At least, I wasn't paying attention if I saw the original house. So I don't see the way to prove it that.
They have down plans to build almost exactly on the previously existing home's footprint to minimize any intrusions or deviations from what was previously standing. So I guess it's basically going to be probably exactly what they want.
Right.
What they want.
He says the roof line is going to be different.
He said what, Dean?
The roof line construction is going to be a little different.
Right, so it doesn't cause
He said it's going to be improvement because now the neighbors to the west can see a more review of the water.
That's what I had. But it looks to be in the blueprints, if I'm looking at the roof, it looks as if it is, you know, slanted in such a way as to not be obtrusive to the neighbors across the street. I know there's a massage house across the street that sits on the hill. Shouldn't be too much of a problem there. And Dean, question, you've proven whether the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. I don't know how many of us have been down to look. I know I have, Joe, you have, Tom has. And I think we're doing well.
I think everybody looked.
Is that concrete wall, the old foundation, for the back wall, or?
I'm not sure of that.
You don't want to talk about that?
Yeah.
Right out, yeah, right out in front.
Well, they're saying they're building on the old foundation, but that was the only thing, was that one wall.
Yeah, was that one of the walls.
I know we have the erosion issues with the embankment. So they may have left it there for early to secure the soil, never be from dropping anywhere.
But to the best of your knowledge, do you think that was the back wall to the old, what was existing there?
I really couldn't judge that.
It's hard to tell when you go down there what that was.
I'm sure the county won't let them build on it if it's not substantial. I think, Dean, I think he's just using it to keep from losing any more land. Until he could do more construction.
Well, my question along those lines is that couldn't be more or less a house, about three, or is it going to be closer to a road?
Well, he's got the front subback set at 61.5 feet. On the rear subback, he's only going to have 11 feet. And the side is 6.6.
It's pretty well standard for what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I'm reading the subbacks I have. Do you have a foot down here?
Dan?
If I hit this right in front, oh, sorry.
Do we know if he's using the same foundation?
No.
Is that?
No, we don't. No, there's he's going to draw the drawline. With all the riding. I'm just reading the brief summary, Pat.
What's the distance, what's the subback on the northern line?
Maybe 6.5.
6.5.
No, that's the southern line. What's the subback on the northern line?
There is a northern line.
I think they're the same.
No, you're right, that is the southern line.
My opinion would be that he's not going to use the existing foundation or whatever left there. Only because I believe underneath the new international codes now, any house is built near the water, it has to have like a four foot high upper.
Or it could be out.
Yep. It's got to be elevated so the water will go underneath instead of causing damage.
All right.
So I'm pretty sure it's not going to be the same foundation.
Okay.
My question is why is it got to be six and a half feet off the southern line?
Well, he's got a sewer pump there, you see that? His sewer pump is, if he gets any closer the other way, he's going to be close to the sewer pump. To better ensure the distance to it.
Where's your subbacks? Okay, he just said six and a half. But he didn't say what the subback is on those.
Yeah, this is
That's the shortest one. That is the shortest one.
And you would have to fall up to the sewer pump.
I'm not sure what the regulation is about accessibility to that pump. I have one. And the guys can get the truck down in there, but they don't need to bring the truck down. They can hose it from there. So if your question, can they get closer to it, I guess they could, I don't know how much closer. Because we don't have that.
I don't know what it is, but yeah. That was the question. Could it be more centered? So it's not as close to the other property? Can, can.
Well, we approved structures this large on 35-foot lots on Lower Lake Road, so this is not really I think Dean, 6'6" is
Still don't have the numbers on it, right? It's a question. You want to take this, so we have somebody could answer it?
That's a question that's not bad. What you guys want to do with it, it's up to you.
I personally don't have a problem with 6'6". You don't have a problem with it? No. And he draws the fact that it's, you know, not a non-conforming lot, so you know, in my personal opinion.
It's about five years ago, Dan and I drove down Lower Lake Road and took a survey. And less than 20% of the lots on Lower Lake Road are of legal size. 20%.
Yeah, I mean, they keep coming up, keep coming up as far as what about to natural? I don't know, it is what it is. My opinion is if he's saying he's going to prefer to build in the same footprint, is it going to change anything? Might have been that.
Yeah, he's saying that, but doesn't look like that.
Well, they put it in a resolution. Well, is there any more discussion on this at all, anybody? More time to look at, look at it? Is there any questions?
I don't have a lot of questions, but either we're going to do something that doesn't conform, or we're going to do something that conforms.
Yeah, it doesn't
There'll be completely different houses that conform.
It's just that when you're looking at, when you're looking at this, it's a non, it's it's on a non-conforming lot. The structure is coming down completely.
It's gone.
Yeah.
Right. So he's starting over. So there's no magic to keeping same dimensions and same footprint going forward. I mean, he can say that as a way of saying, look, I'm not increasing I'm not increasing the non-compliance, you know, the non-conformity with the code. But the point of the code, the point of the whole thing is to get things in compliance with the code. This has been torn down completely. So perpetuating the non-conformity is not necessarily a good thing. And this is an area variance that he's asking for. So it's at the same standard as every other area variance that comes through. So using the same footprint, not increasing the non-conformity is evidence, that's all, you know, part of the argument for the advocate, but that's, you know, there's no magic in that as far as, as you guys, you're considering this application.
I guess I would rather see it in current footprint. Something that can be closer to conforming, even if it can't absolutely conform.
You know, I was asking about the foundation, maybe there's a reason that it's going to stay six and a half feet off the property line. If they are, you know, if there is part of that is usable, I don't know. But so, but these are all things for you to consider as you're, as you're, you know, going through the test here. Everything I can see, I think it's just keeping to the one side.
Yeah. The sewer pump on that? It's what it is.
Well, that would make sense. I think it's keeping it to the one side because of the sewer line on the other. I mean, I'm not sure if there's a code. If the house has to be so many feet away from the the septic system or sewer system, whatever they have.
Mine's only four feet away from the house.
If that's the case, then you couldn't move any, you know.
No. And if you use a scale a little bit, it shows at one point from a pin to the back line is 14.12. If you flip that over, that's about what he's got on that other lot line.
Right.
It's about 15 feet.
Okay, so sewer, sewer line is on the north side of that. Yeah, north side of course. Do we have further discussion, questions at all?
Do we have to prove hardship?
As far as hardship is concerned, you know, I think we've run through that. When they acquired the house in August of 19, they were going to renovate it, but after consulting with a structural engineer, they found that it was dilapidated to the point where it was unsafe.
So they bought it first and it went later?
Yeah, so they they had all torn down.
And that's how they created hardship?
You know. Yeah, in the yes, in the professional opinion of their structural engineer, the foundation and framing were not safe. And it was taken down. And as stated, they want to rebuild with the same footprint with previously existed homes, but to minimize any intrusion or deviation of what was previously standing. And that was going down to
Yes, we worry that that is, that it's kind of irrelevant when it's one.
Okay, that's reading through the statement of hardship you're asking. I don't know how they when they originally bought the house, what the circumstances were, I really don't have the text of that just to say that they found out after that, I guess. Probably when they were going to begin to renovate it is when they came across these, the foundation and the framing. Only what I have here, what you have.
The point makes sense. Neighbors were saying it was a wreck anyway. To move a person and so forth.
Well, it was a ton of
Yeah, so they bought it as a wreck.
But I talked to the guy, just casually, six months ago, and at that time, he planned on renovating. on renovating it. And then he had guys come in to look at it, and look, you're wasting money trying to make this. It was open, it took a chimney out and left the space open for like six years. So the raccoons and water, anything put it on it, I can only imagine what the inside Well, we have nothing else really to go on except for what we have here and who else can control, contribute, as far as that's concerned. I'll make a motion. So I think what we need to do next...
He didn't hear you.
Is that I declare ourselves lead agency. I guess we're going to do that first. Who would like to make the motion? Someone, Joe, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Yes.
Okay, well, okay, so this being the construction of, this is a single-family residence, and they're asking for an area variance to do so, this would be a type-two action. And there's a particular section, it's six seventeen point five, C nine, if that could find twenty-two minutes, that's a section that designates construction or expansion of a single-family residence on an approved lot, including utilities and... So this would fall in that, and so it would be appropriate for this board to make a finding, to make a finding that this is a type-two action, and that will, that will conclude the seeker review.
Okay, we want to go through our eleven points, correct, Pat, now?
Well, no, you don't.
They had eleven and some.
Being a type-two action, you would not need to do that.
But not, okay, all right. So we wouldn't have to do the environmental assessment, then?
Correct.
So as far as the area variance is concerned, are there any questions that have been answered? Do I have a motion for approval? Or...
You need the motion to declare this a type-two...
Or even decline.
Well, you need to, to vote on whether or not it's a type-two action.
I'm sorry, who?
You need to vote on whether or not the board finds that it's a type-two action.
Well, I make a motion that we find this is a type-two action.
I'll second that.
Susan seconded it. All those in favor? And now we can go on, Pat?
Yes, if you've considered the, the five factors for the area variance, and those that are set out in the application date, as far as the structure of the review, and so if you have done that, and you're set and are satisfied with that, you can, it will be ready for a motion to either find that, that the benefit, so what you're trying to consider here is whether the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the house safety, welfare, and neighborhood. Is what the, the ultimate consideration here is.
Okay, you go through, I got your questions. You've done that already, Dan. I think we've gone through them all.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody have any, anybody have any? Not at all. Okay, so I think now we have a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve with the setbacks shown as in the drawing of sixty-one five front and six-point-six to the south. Do you want to have a second?
Second.
Susan seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor? The second order of business tonight is the resubmission of additional information relative to the application of Huntington apartments for special use permit for raw property located at two oh one Fall Street. I want to see if everybody's read the literature submitted. Since we've approved the area, area variances for parking for height, it's taken care of, and the other thing we need to do here is address the special use permit, correct?
This is for the special use permit, all the, so this is a really continuing of the original...
Six criteria, and that would be three hundred...
Correct, so the approvals of the area variances remain?
It's been done, right?
Yes, the recommendations by the, by the planning board, that remains, you know, every house remains, we're just going to redo the special use permit. And reconsider the, the...
Pat, before we go any further, can I just ask you? Tim had a good question. Can the alternates during the proceedings give their opinion or input as far as to the board is concerned? Is that appropriate?
Uh, I guess when we, yeah, when you get to the point where the alternate will not be sitting, will not be sitting in judgment...
Right.
Uh, then it's appropriate, but until you get to the point where, uh, where it's still possible that they may have to fill in, like if it's a, something that could extend over for a few nights, you know, which happens, if there's any chance that they're going to be sitting in one of the seats, rendering an impartial decision, they shouldn't be putting on the record their particular feelings about a, about a, about a project.
Okay.
So they can ask questions, you know, especially, you know, especially could help guide the inquiry, but they shouldn't be tipping their hand, so to speak. They shouldn't be prejudging it, because, and none of you should be judging it until you actually make a vote. You're supposed to be open to taking information until you, until you, until you vote on it. So if so, if an alternate stands up and advocates one way or the other of what should happen with a particular project, and then turns out next month, this person now has to sit and, and, and vote on this, it's already, let his, you know, lack of impartiality be, be known as on the public record. So questions, fine, but they shouldn't be advocated one way or another.
Okay, so it can't really be input, but it can be questions.
Sure.
All right, just...
Sure, and I hope that kind of makes sense.
Yeah, thank you. Good. Just want to ask a question. Okay, I don't know if I need to go through all the literature, the resubmission data that we have, but let me just do it briefly. And what you have before you is resubmission from Woods, Oveat, and Gilman. And then retained by Home Leasing Eagle Star for this project. And previously proposed, as you all know, fifty-five residential units, with studio and such. What has changed is the studios, previous proposal was seventeen, now it's revised to five, one bedrooms from thirty-five units to forty-five, two bedrooms are staying the same at three, previous proposal, as I said, was fifty-five, it's now fifty-three. Size of the units, I know this was a contention last time, size of the units proposed is consistent with and dictated by New York State H eight, HCR, Mattern amenities. The project, as you all know, we've brought about, is adequate parking in it, will benefit the community, and as you can read, the multifamily housing in downtown Seminole Falls, stated goals through the comprehensive plan, and strategic plan for economic development. And as they state here, we've not had a chance really, unless you've been on, on the computer and looked at other developments, they specifically refer to Holly Gardens here, a similar leasing And they need, the special use permit is required, of course. I think you've all gone through traffic, and I've, uh, had to see this, I personally had to see this, uh, traffic study before done by SRF with the Seminole Falls Police Department, and that was great to have that. You know, it was one of my, one of, one of my contentions was, I thought it was too close to an intersection, but after reading this report, you know, there's no need to have DOT, in my opinion, you know? Anybody can speak up about anything that I'm going through here, of course. So as far as traffic was concerned, it's, you know, in my opinion, it's been satisfied. Density, I thank you for working with us, and it's been reduced a little bit, and I know that the studios have been readjusted and all. Unit sizes, you know, I'm not going to be, go through too much of it, but habitable, appropriate units permitted by our TOM code, and a TOM code, and, you know, I, I take responsibility for this, is that I overlooked this. It's not regulated and allows multiple dwelling units regardless of size, so the board's authority to restrict the size of the permitted units is not within our jurisdiction. And as chairperson, like I said, I take responsibility for not reading. And they refer to other apartment communities in Seminole Falls, East Apartments, Stanton Meadows, Elizabeth Crossings in Water rules, and Elmcrest in Geneva. I'm reminding the board that the special use permit carries a large burden of proof and it's intended to be permitted. And it goes on to point out different, I assume court cases here, three of them, and based on opinions and such. So special permit criteria has been satisfied in book three hundred dash forty-six A. Would it be the board's pleasure that I go through it, or are you satisfied as to what you wrote?
Please go through it, so we can have a record of what...
Criteria satisfied, the use shall so be designed, located, and proposed to be operated, that the public health, safety, and welfare inconvenience will be protected. Detail this in exhibit seven, and identified with community plans detailed in exhibit five, for affordable housing for those who work to live in the community, and for housing and support services for the homeless veterans. The project is of low intensity use and equality development. We know the use will have no significant traffic impact based on this SRF associates' study that they refer to. I also thank you, next paragraph, the property will have onsite management and providing essential services. I think you had done twenty-four seven, someone would be on, correct me on that?
Yeah, we intend to have an employee unit onsite.
An employee unit onsite?
Be an employee who is able to occupy the four units.
And it would occupy, I'm sorry, occupy...
One of the units, yeah.
Onsite?
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
That's something that we have that I had a person writing about, and I also think it's a good thing, onsite management and providing the essential services to the veterans. As far as the recreational areas are concerned, I know originally four thousand square feet was taken away because the parking had to be increased from fifty-five units to fifty-nine to sixty-three. I think we came up with fifty-nine, something like that. And I know there was recreation space taken away, however, with the close proximity of our community center, we have, and a lot of eco-trail, it might be a little over the a thousand feet that we require, but, you know, it's a, to me at least, it's not such a variation of a distance that it becomes a factor. So I think, you know, as far as the recreation area is concerned, it's satisfied that. Negative declaration has been issued by this board. The use will not cause substantial injury to the value of property in the neighborhood, and I think that is a self-evident, you know, whatever you do, I don't think I have to need to go into it any more than that to say this would be an improvement in that area. I don't think anybody would have probably be saying with that being said here. The use will be comparable with adjoining development and the proposed character of the zone district in which it is located. It is consistent with a zoning district, and is a use, being it's a C two, is permitted by the special use permit, and is in harmony. Bringing new life to a blighted historic building, of course, and enhancing the neighborhood, as they state in the report, identified as seven to save. And to go along with the denial of the special use permit for the Huntington Building would fail to protect an important historic resource. Not just that, but also providing housing for people. And if you read the comprehensive plan, which I, I should, I should have done more detail. Okay. Everyone off-street parking and loading shall be provided, and ingress, egress shall be so designed as to cause minimum interference with traffic on a budding streets. As evidenced, provided by the, the property provided onsite is more than enough. I know there was a contention here, but with, with me at least, the intensity proposed fifty-three units, traffic accident history, we've gone through this, I think. And Home Leats has changed the site plan to eliminate... And Home Leasing has changed the site plan to eliminate two-way traffic in one of the entrances to the project, with a northerly driveway nearest the intersection now is restricted to a use. However, if I read further this report before, I guess that was something that one of our members had brought up, but it was probably not necessary as far as that was concerned, but thank you. Because I know that was changed. And then we go on to say, this proposal, this proposed project will be a fantastic outcome for the Huntington Building. And it would be in keeping with our comprehensive plan. The hardship would be created, would be on Mr. Koch. May not have an economically viable option for the reuse of the building. Proposed demolition. We all know a gas station would have gone in there, I don't know how anybody, well, we don't need to know how anybody feels about entering an historic village with a gas station. Given the condition in the market, another reuse of the building that does not require a special use permit for a less intensive use is highly unlikely, and the town will likely suffer a similar blight to the large vacant industrial building further west. So, and then we have exhibits after that map, and we have pictures of the Holly Building. Also, I hadn't seen this before, but the design handbook, August eighteenth, which if you go through it, and I believe it's this, has the minimum areas, minimum, minimum square foot areas and maximum square foot areas for these, that definitely was an eye-opener, for sure, for me. And that's all that I have, if there's anything else you should add to that. Pat, or any person on the board?
I'd like to make the motion. I want to get it right, though. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the special use permit, is that the right wording?
Well, just to make sure everything's completed, does anybody have any other particular comments on the six areas that we're looking at here, which is, as Dan just went through, the design so that it's, so that public health, safety, welfare, and convenience are protected, and two is the not substantial injury to the value of the property, and three, that the use is compatible with adjoining development, four, adequate landscaping, screening, five is the off-street parking and loading and ingress and egress, and then six is that the use conforms with other applicable regulations, unless an area variance is granted, which they have been. So in that, is there any other additional comments anybody would like to include in any...
I'd like a clarification on one of the traffic items, please. It does say that the northern vehicle access shown on the plan will be limited to the exit only, is that correct?
Yeah, the plan that the resubmital included the revised site plan that showed the one-way access out closer to the intersection.
And I appreciate that, doing that even though your study shows it's not...
Right, well, I think it was a condition of, when you, the variance.
That was a condition of the variance, yes.
So when you granted the variance, that I believe that was a condition, so we changed this to one-way, it's not showing this rendering, but we resubmitted the revised site plan with that, with the revised materials.
That's the only concern I have, okay.
Tom?
No.
And I really don't have any myself. I can see it all.
So then having considered those six areas, it would be appropriate to make a motion against approval, denial, or approval with conditions?
So I have a motion on the floor from Susan.
For approval.
What would be with the...
To issue the special use permit.
You have a second, Dan.
We have a second primary. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any others?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you. Thank you for the work.
We believe the private chief of... On behalf of Peter Kyle, I would say thank you, and really appreciates your consideration and consideration, and we appreciate you very much.
I have a word for the board.
And thank you to the board.
So thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it, appreciate it. Look forward to the project.
Thank you so much, you have a good night.
Have a nice board. And social business.
They're all smiling, yes.
Motion to adjourn. How are you? Good to meet you. All those in favor? This is a good outcome.
Nice to see you.
Kim, thank you.
Thank you.